How that works.
You look like the mafia, Fritz.
How's that?
Yeah, that looks.
If I smoke my big cigar or something.
Yeah, that'd be good. That'd be good.
You need to be, this needs to be. Already got chrome.
Okay, YouTube's not cooperating. If you guys want to go ahead and start your meeting, we are recording it on, on Zoom, and it says it's live on YouTube. Whether or not it is, I don't know. The other screen does not show that it is. But I can be working on that while while you guys are having your discussion.
Okay. It's. Yeah. I'm gonna call the meeting at seven oh three, a pledge of allegiance. I'll lead the pledge of allegiance also. I pledge allegiance to America and to the republic. That was interesting. Okay, Missy, you want to do roll call, please?
Sure, Fritz. Fritz?
Yeah.
Robert? Becky?
Here.
Anya?
Here.
Libby? Where's Libby at? Is she supposed to be on here?
I thought, I figured they'd both be on here, but. What time is it? Is it seven? Yeah, maybe she's having trouble getting on.
Okay, so we just.
You did my time last.
So we just, the four of the five council members. Did you guys?
Yeah, is Robert there?
I'm here.
Yeah, I can bear.
There he is. There he is.
Well, I declare we have a quorum.
Okay.
One I want to announce right now, we will not be able to open this meeting to the public for comment. Just, we're not set up yet to do that. But they can listen in and they can, I guess, email us. Have any questions for Flor May? I want to approve the minutes for three sixteen and three twenty-three. Can I get somebody a second with that?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't present at the, at those meetings, so I.
Okay.
Okay, let's go on to the new business and the fire territory. And let's, I'm gonna turn it over to Flor, Flor May.
Thank you, Fritz. And I should just mention, Libby just sent a text and she said she's trying to get in. It said the tote, the host will let me in soon.
That's Joe. He's working on the YouTube thing. He should be able to see it, though.
I'll go, I'll go ahead and, and get started. So first of all, thank you so much for calling the, the special meeting. I, we hated to do it this way and hated to do it at this particular time. But as you know, the fire department situation is quite tenuous and, and it has to be addressed. I think everybody knows we spent the last six months laying out the situation and laying out the case for special legislation. And we had proposed a model, and I think everybody has a copy or is able to see it on YouTube, the original funding concept, attachment one. And I just wanted to walk through this real quickly, where, where we were at. So what we had proposed was that in phase one, we would pass special legislation by March 2020. I want to mention, we worked very closely with Bob Cherry and with Mike Crider. They were exceptional, helped us all the way through the process. We did pass the House and then got squashed in the Senate. And I'll tell you a little bit of what the special legislation was about here in this first attachment. I know most of you saw our multiple presentations. Many of you came and saw the presentation at the Fire Task Force. On was funding. Most of you know right now that we have funding that is really for a volunteer program. We proposed going to the Buck Creek Volunteer Department funding model because the community is approximately the same size, actually a few thousand people fewer. They have two, two different areas that they're covering, two different stations, similar, very similar needs to what, what we needed. So we wanted to look at that. We really wanted to make sure that we would be able to stay sustainable 24/7 at Station Number Three in Fortville. We wanted to look at a professional management model, would still require part-time and paid per run, but wanted to make sure that we were going to have a full-time leadership. It's a real challenge for us right now with, we don't have set shifts. Got a wide variety of people from a wide variety of backgrounds coming together each day and trying to be consistent is a major, major. As, as both the town planners will tell you, we really need a fire marshal. And for those of you who followed the Main Street Fire, we really, really need a fire marshal out doing regular inspections, need the funding for that. And we were just looking at a series of things in terms of the basics, in terms of getting manpower in a station in McCordville. And the special legislation would not have funded fully a second station model, but it would allow us to do more in terms of having more on-station coverage. And help us build towards what we really need is, is second coverage. And I know there've been concerns voiced from, from many in terms of, oh, you know, now we're sending from one station out all over the township. And so people, so we've got engines leaving Fortville and going into McCordville. And yes, that is absolutely the case. So as we were looking at this, we wanted to at least sustain the 24/7 coverage that we've got now. And as you know, engage everyone. And I just want to say thank you to both the towns, the school corporation, County Council. Everybody stepped up and supported us in this. And so it was quite disappointing when, when they did not cover it. I do want to just mention, this original plan really moved to, in phase two, that we would still have to do a study to address the future, create, determine the appropriate size and the structure for a fire territory, and really look at a more sustainable plan. A special legislation was simply solving our short to midterm issues. What we discovered in the fire territory issue was both the state senate and the DLG F Commissioner Wes Bennett came back and said, we really want you to form a fire territory. We want the changes in tax structure, excuse me, in tax rate to be made at the local level, and we really want you to, to address it there. So we took a step back and sat down with our attorney, sat down Jeff Bellamy's on, on his call, Michael Royder, our financial advisor, Sansone, and many of you know Paige from her work at Baker Tilly. She, she is the state expert on, on fire territories. And pulled everybody together and said, why don't we, let's step back, maybe we should, let's relook at this. They're telling us form a fire territory. Okay, let's, let's look at that. Before we go into our options on fire territory, I do want to issue to Chad Abel. Chad came on the station actually a few months ago, working in a part-time position for us. Chad is a captain at Fisher's Fire Department, and we hired him as our chief back in the early portion of May. And I've asked if, we'd actually all hoped we would be there in person and, and get to meet in person, but wanted Chad to talk a little bit about the status of where Vernon Township Fire Department is right now, before we, we dig into where, where we need to go.
Hello, everybody. First of all, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll apologize, I'm actually working my full-time job today, so hopefully we get through this without me going somewhere. First of all, to echo what trustee May mentioned, it was my hope to be able to meet every one of you face to face and before we got to this point anyway, and obviously with our current situation with the COVID crisis, that is not possible. So I regret that, but I do look forward to meeting everybody. And I hope in the future, we can talk a lot more about what I can do to help you, what Vernon Township Fire Department can do. A lot of what I'm gonna do right now is echo what trustee May just mentioned. She did a pretty good job of kind of covering some of those things. And then I also want to open it up to questions if you have anything specific for me. You know, again, to reiterate what she said, currently, we've got 24/7 coverage, which based on what I, what I've been able to look at since this time last year. Obviously, that's, that is an improvement. So, so there was a major step forward. And I'm gonna also just, just mention that both Fortville and McCordville long-tier fire departments served this area with distinction for, for a number of years, obviously. A big history on that. At a certain point, though, and, and in my 25 years at Fisher's, I was able to kind of watch this transition from where it is plausible to provide adequate coverage with volunteer response and, and even adding in some part-time. Like my background, 31 years in the fire service, I started a volunteer department that went through this very soon transition while I was there. There is a bit of a tipping point where suddenly volunteer coverage and part-time coverage becomes very difficult to maintain and provide the consistent level of coverage that you need. So currently, we're, we're in a good, good spot from where we were, and that's, as the trustee mentioned, 24/7 coverage in Fortville. And what that consists of is we've got a engine company that's there, staffed with three or four people, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. In theory. And the reason I say in theory is because it's covered with part-time staff. We strive every day to get that covered, and there are occasional times where we're coming, looking at that, that next day, wondering, are we gonna have that staffing or not? Now, I'm pleased to say that our, our part-timers and our paid-per-run, which, which is really our home responders and so forth, have stepped up to make sure that that, that is maintained fairly well. There's still some gaps in our schedule every day we're looking at. We also have two people assigned to a paramedic ambulance. As you know, we replaced Seals Ambulance as our provider. Seals again, and, and you know, from a guy that, that knows Randy Seals, that service provided a great service for a number of years. By bringing EMS in-house and underneath the fire department umbrella, we were able to save some taxpayer dollars there, spend them more efficiently, and also create some revenue. But that's also covered with part-time personnel. And I will say this, we're getting them at a bargain if you look at what part-time paramedics and part-time EMTs typically cost a certain. So right now, we're maintaining because there's people that are willing to step up and do that. With that, obviously, we have, well, I should move on to say, then there's also very minimal home response for additional apparatus out of Fortville. So what does that mean for us? We get dispatched on a fire, that engine and ambulance goes, we may or may not have somebody coming for a tanker. Now, we're working on models to try to clear that tanker as much as we can, but the, the bottom line is, is we're responding 24/7 with five people out of the gate to go to a residence fire when, yeah, I can tell you that NFPA models are gonna easily put that of 14 or 15 people that should be arriving at your house that's on fire. McCordville, as she mentioned, we're still home response model in McCordville. We have great volunteers over there that, that, that give us as much time as they can. But as you can imagine, there's a reflex time that exists there. If the tones drop for any run in McCordville or anywhere in our district, because again, we rely on that station to respond into Fortville as much as we do to respond into McCordville. There's a reflex time there of several minutes before we clear that firehouse, bring in additional personnel, additional equipment. Currently, as she mentioned, we have a part-time fire chief. That's, that's me. I think that model's fine right now. I'm, I'm certainly working more than part-time hours for you, but I intend to do that as, as long as it takes. And then we have a full-time EMS chief. Here's what I'll say about our full-time EMS chief. Under our current model, we're, we're working her way too much. She is covering, effectively covering that ambulance quite a bit more than we've asked her, her to initially when she was hired. And that struggle is because we get paramedics in. There is a lot of paramedic work, as you can imagine, available around Indianapolis currently. And that's not gonna go away anytime soon. There's, there's a lot of other opportunities. We're just one of many. So what are our gaps in coverage? I mentioned a couple of them. I'll, I'll start out with trustee May mentioning the part-time officers. We don't have a consistent command staff in there every day. We've got some great people, and I'm pleased to say that many people have stepped up to keep this ship going in the right direction. But with that said, without the consistency of, of, you know, full-time personnel, there's always gonna be maybe inconsistencies in how we, how we manage issues throughout the day. It's been, I already mentioned the extended response time in McCordville due to a home response coverage and, and to relate that to Fortville again. A fire engine on the road within a minute thirty, followed by an ambulance, is not fire protection. That's the beginning of fire protection. So right now, we rely on folks coming out of that McCordville station to assist us. Now, as you saw probably, if you paid attention to the fire downtown, when Bonzi was there, we had a lot of mutual aid. And thankfully, between Pendleton and, and Buck Creek and Fisher's, we were able to pull a response together. That is not guaranteed responses because if other things are going on around us, that app, we're, we're secondary to that. For instance, the initial dispatch pulled an engine out of Fisher's and a ladder out of Fisher's. That engine was not available. So we didn't get, we didn't get an engine that we were expecting. So that, that meant increased response times once we filled that position in. And then part-timers in general. We have some great part-timers, but my experience has been over the years that part-timers are inherently transient employees. They, there's, there's a high turnover rate in part-timers, particularly at the pay that we're able to offer with our limited budget. I have no intention to try to replace part-timers or our paid-per-run volunteers, if you will. That's, it's, it's, it'd be years from now before you'd be at a place where that would even be reasonable to discuss. So what I'm, I'm trying to do with the budget that we have is make sure we get as much consistent coverage and, and then enhance it with, with part-timers and paid-per-run. Another gap is we have, I put on my list a limited training budget. And one of, one of our young firefighters the other day asked me if I had a training budget, and I said, yes. I said, it's exactly zero. Our budget's very limited, so therefore, we don't have the, the dollars to provide training the way we really need to, notion in FPA. And then because of our, our current budget, we don't have an ability to expand the coverage under what we currently have. So that's a, that's a, I think, a fairly brief overview. Do you guys have any questions specific for me?
I should mention that the, the chief did not mention the state of our apparatus. And that I think most of you know our apparatus is 19 to 30 years of age. We have engines that qualify for antique status. We could put antique plates on them. So enormous concerns also on the, on the equipment side. So if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and move into, okay, so special legislation did not pass. The recommendation was to form the, is to pursue a fire territory. So there is a second sheet called attachment two. Big letters, recommendation, pursue fire territory. And the, you'll note that there are three different options here. And the, the people that will decide which direction we take, which option we pursue here will be your town council, the Fortville Town Council, the McCordville Town Council tomorrow night, and the Vernon Township Board. And the Vernon Township Board did, tonight is not a vote. It's not a vote on what we're doing. It's a discussion of whether, of what to pursue. And so we're going to talk about our three options in terms of what to pursue. And our first option obviously would be to do nothing, that we would stay with the budget that we've got right now, which is a volunteer budget. You all know it's unsustainable beyond two years and possibly less than that due to COVID-19 tax implications. The, the two years we are spending in deficit to do what we're doing right now. And our, our tax rate will not keep up with just the part-time paid-for-run structure at Station Three right now. And so our option would really be to turn fire back to the two towns, if that, if that chose, if that option was chosen. I know McCordville studied that, determined that it would be more expensive for just one town to take it, and that their preference was that, that we continue. So if the decision is to continue with Vernon Township continuing to administer, then our recommendation is either option B or option C. Option B, or I call this the special legislation replacement. It isn't exactly the special legislation replacement because we don't know exactly what it will look like until Paige lays out the analysis on it. But essentially, we would still model the Buck Creek Fire Department funding. This would allow us to evolve from the unsustainable situation that we've got now. It does create a sustainable situation in terms of on-station manpower coverage at Station Three to what we have now. It does allow us to make a few improvements. It would allow us to put into place a professional management model. We would still require part-time and paid-for-run firefighters and medics. But it would allow us to put a more consistent leadership in teams. It would also allow us to add a fire marshal and a fire admin, which is desperately needed. Just so you know, with the paid, the part-time model, we have over 100 firefighters just to cover one station 24/7. It's, it's a crazy, crazy model. We would still, we would have the manpower to support one ambulance and one fire engine. It may allow us to make a few improvements in manpower on Station in McCordville, which is good for everybody because it goes back to that, that coverage that Chief Abel was talking about, and making sure that we've got backup when we need backup, and that that backup comes quickly. We will still need to find land and begin to develop the plan for a station in, in McCordville. And as we grow, obviously, that's of benefit to all of us. So if we're going to pursue option B or the basic fire territory option, then we would, what we are asking for is the agreement of the Fortville Town Council to move forward and pursue that. And again, Paige will be talking more in, in detail of what that, what that would encompass. Option C, the more robust fire territory. I want to emphasize, this is not, this is not phase two in the original plan. Phase two in the original plan was that we probably need to look at those communities around us because for the more, more robust fire territory, we will need a much larger population. We will need to include an industrial base, which we really presently do not have in Vernon Township. And we're going to have to look at who would be the appropriate partners. If we form this fire territory, obviously, you would all have a say in who those partners might be and what the appropriate steps are. What we are laying here in option C is moving forward with funding for two stations, that we would have full-time on-station manpower coverage. Again, professional, professional management with primarily full-time firefighters and medics. Not all. We would still have, have some part-time included in that. It would include the fire marshal and the fire admin. We would have manpower to support one ambulance and two fire engines. One from each of the stations. And it would allow us to move forward in really developing the station plan from McCordville. Either of these approaches, obviously, we need the full financial analysis laid out and need to have further, further discussion on these. But these are the three options that we see as, as, as the options on the, on the table. Any questions on the options before Paige moves into discussing? What is a fire territory? How does this work? What are the, what are the details? Okay, if there's no questions, I want to introduce Paige Sansone to talk about what is a fire territory and what is the process that we would be, be going through.
Thanks, Lori. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So your options to fund fire services are limited. There's basically three options that you have. We're gonna mostly talk about the fire territory, but I did want you to know that there are other options available. So one is township can do, can issue an emergency loan. And it would be kind of a temporary, short-term loan, and you could repay it with property tax. So obviously, the, the con to that would be an increase on the tax rate. Are you getting feedback?
I'm not.
Okay, it must have been me. Okay. Okay, it must have been me. Okay. Another option is the fire district. This is a kind of, not a very popular option because you basically give up local control. The county would have control of your, your fire services. And then the third option is a fire territory. And that's, and that's, I think, is what makes most sense here. And you would retain the local control. Now, all three of these options would increase the overall tax rate. The property taxes would go up and there could be some impact to other revenue sources to overlapping units. And I'll talk about that in a minute. So because of the COVID-19 situation, the, the deadline to establish a fire territory has been extended to June thirtieth. Normally, and by statute, you would only have until the end of March to establish a fire territory. So we've passed that deadline, but it's, an executive order issued by the governor has extended the deadline to June thirtieth. So that kind of, it's an advantage for you because it's not something that we would have had in any other year, had it not been for COVID-19. So the, there is a specific process to establish a fire territory. I mean, the very first thing, the most important piece of it, the basis of the whole analysis is to develop an operating budget to fund your fire services. Once that operating budget is developed, then, then a financial advisor would come in and prepare a financial impact analysis, and that's what Baker Tilly does. There's many elements to this financial impact analysis, and I'm going to get into that in a minute. But one of the primary things that we would do, obviously, is determine the taxpayer impact to those living in the affected taxing districts. Next, we would prepare presentations for a public hearing. You have to have three public hearings by statute. And we have to present the same information at all three public hearings. It's really an opportunity for the taxpayers to, to comment and hear the same information.
Did we lose Paige?
Did we lose her?
I think so.
Okay, can you hear me now?
There she is.
A little technical difficulty, we're back. So I was talking about the three public hearings. What we need to do is present the same information at all three hearings. We need to allow taxpayer comments, but we want to make sure that the taxpayers are hearing the same information at the three hearings. It's really an opportunity for those that can't get to the first hearing to have the opportunity to attend the second or third hearings. At the end of the third hearing, then, the governing bodies would take a vote to approve or not approve the fire territory. Again? Can you hear me? Okay.
I can hear you.
Okay. Great. So if this is approved by all three legislative bodies, then we would submit a petition to the state, the Department of Local Government Finance. Again, the deadline is June thirtieth. And the state's role in this is to approve the initial, like the beginning property tax levy for this fire territory. After the first year, the fire territory's property tax levy is going to grow at the same statewide growth factor as all other units within the state. So that's, that's not different. But what's getting approved by the state really is the starting property tax levy. Now, you cannot go back and change that levy unless you re-establish your fire territory, which would mean that you would have to dissolve your current fire territory and bring in another adjoining taxing unit. So it's, it's kind of important that you understand that because you're not going to be able to go back at a later date and ask the state to increase the levy unless you re-establish in a different format. So again, the timeline to do this, we, we need to have three public hearings. And there's a stipulation that we need to have at least thirty days between the first and the third public hearing. So we, this is something that we would have to move through pretty quickly in order to get this done by the end of June. In my handout, I just, I put a sample or an example of some meeting dates. These, you don't have to stick to these, but the important thing is you do need to have thirty days between the first and the thirds. So in my example, I say that the first public hearing could be May thirteenth, the third, June seventeenth, and then you can have the public hearing in between anytime. So what, what is Baker Tilly's scope of services? Well, we would prepare that financial impact analysis and there's certain key elements that we have to hit in this analysis. This is something that DLGF heavily scrutinizes to make sure that we have dotted all of our i's and crossed all of our t's. So one is the calculation of the tax rate and the levy to fund your budget. And that's why I said the operating budget is the basis of this whole financial analysis. Without that, we can't tell you what rate or levy it would take to fund that budget. After that, we're going to look at the impact of the revenues on the affected local government units. So the overlapping units, like the school, the library, whatever overlaps, the county overlaps in your taxing district. And what we would specifically be looking at is local income tax, vehicle excise tax, and circuit breaker tax credits. All of those revenue items are affected by changes in property tax levy. So as one unit increases its levy for, say, a fire territory, other units are going to see a reduction in those revenue streams because they are based on the amount of levy that you have in proportion to the other levies in the county. We're going to also look at the impact to the taxpayers. Specifically, we will have examples of tax bills for various property types and various property values. That is usually the biggest interest from the taxpayers. They, they don't much care what's happening with the other taxing units as far as revenue reductions, but they want to know what, what, how it's going to affect them individually. So we're going to have examples of that. As far as the petition, we're just going to have all the information that we put together for the public hearings, including perhaps a presentation from the fire department. That's usually an element of the petition that we put together. We're going to have the executed legal documents, the sublocation, and then any other relevant information that we feel DLGF is using to make their determination. We also facilitate questions from the DLGF. Before I was at Baker Tilly, I was the Assistant Budget Director at the DLGF. So I know exactly what they're looking for. I can speak their language. Sometimes their language is rather confusing. So I can sort that out and we would facilitate just communications between you, all of you, all the parties involved in DLGF. And of course, we would monitor the steps of, of the process to make sure you're hitting all of the deadlines. The estimated cost for our services usually runs between twenty and twenty-five thousand. This, entities or especially the township, Vernon Township, has done a lot of legwork as far as the legislation was concerned. We think that we could get this done for a cost not to exceed twenty thousand. And I would venture to guess it would be something less than that. But since we don't know even how many meetings we're going to have or how the analysis is going to turn out, then we generally just do a not-to-exceed. But we, we will bill time and expense, so whatever time we have into it, we will bill for that and we will not exceed the price that's in the placement letter. In, in my experience, when I get into these situations, the taxing units will share the costs of our services. We typically just contract with one entity and then that one entity works it out with the participating units as to how the cost will be split. I provided in my handout three examples of what I usually see, but it all varies. It's, that is completely up to all of you. You could divide it up equally. You could divide it up by net assessed value, or you could divide it up by maximum levy, or really any other way that you can do that. But these are the three common methods that are used to break out the cost of our services. So that's basically it in relation to a fire territory. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Did, did you ever explain to, you know, later on, we can add a territory in, like Green Township is just north of us, where Summer Lake is. Even if Ingalls isn't interested in doing it because they're a town, we could do that at any time also, right?
Yeah, so what, you just need to invite in another taxing unit that touches your boundary. So as long as the unincorporated portion of Green Township touches your, the boundaries of the current fire territory, yes, you can dissolve your current fire territory and basically re-establish into a brand-new fire territory and reset your property tax levy.
Thank you.
I should mention, our reason for just sticking to Vernon Township, McCordsville, and Fortville at this time, there has been interest from both Ingalls and Green Township Madison County in, in potentially joining us. We haven't done any fiscal analysis. We have not sat down with their boards. We just don't feel like there's enough time to walk through that process before June. We also feel like we did a lot of due diligence in working with our school system. We did a lot of due diligence in working with the county in really presenting our kind of mini-territory here. And we think it would be wise to study those other options before we would, would move forward. And, and I think we talked a little bit about, I mentioned, really look at what is the population size that creates the right, the right tipping point for sustainability, looking at the industrial mix and really looking at the makeup of those, those other, other bodies and making sure that, that we'd have good partners.
Right. Well, the reason why, when you said the industrial park, is Green Township has a pretty large area up there on sixty-nine and thirteen that they're, they're starting to develop that. And then Summer Lake has, I think, eight hundred homes. And then the other addition that's south of there is, it's up my five or six other hundred homes. So I liked later on, if there's no, as I understand it, let's say, two years from now, they want to come in. We could just redo this. It's not a, it's not a major paperwork or headache to get it done.
Well, you will have to go through the process again of having the three public hearings and you'll have to have a financial analysis done, so it's the same, same process. But if everybody's on board, it, you know, it should move rather smoothly.
Okay, thank you.
And just to, to make sure that everybody understands, we do, Vernon Township has a contract with Green Township Madison County to provide coverage. It is primarily Summer Lake. You may have seen on, when I laid out the different options, if you look on the second page of that, you will see that we have asked Green Township to raise their rate through House Bill ten sixty-five, which did pass this last time, because what they are paying is not equitable to what those in McCordsville and Fortville are paying. They did step forward and add their CUMFUND and helped us buy medical equipment that we really needed to bring our EMS system in-house. I won't go way into that, but we've got a lot of work to do there before, before we'd be ready to bring them in as part of the territory.
Thank you.
Paige, let me ask, if, if we were to bring in some of the other, say, Madison County, Green Township, and I realize they're a little bit of a drain right now, but if we were to expand this a little bit larger than just the three, the Vernon Township, McCordsville, and Fortville, do you look at that being a larger impact on the taxing units or less of an impact on? I mean, is it worth looking at or no?
It, it's really hard to say. I mean, the, the first thing we would look at is you, or you would tell us, here's the budget. We need to cover that larger area, but in the same respect, you're also getting additional tax base. So the question is, will the additional tax base offset the additional cost that you need to provide service to that area? So we would just need to take a look at it.
And here's the challenge, by June thirtieth, all bodies have to vote for. If they don't, then we don't have a fire territory.
No, I, I, I agree. What we're doing now is keep it the way it is, us three. But we can add, I just want people to know that we can add them later on into the territory. Because I was going to say their industrial park's going to be probably a pretty good size. Thank you.
Lori and Paige, it's Robert Pollen. Can you guys hear me okay?
Barely.
You're, you're a little muffled, but we can hear you. If everybody would mute their mics when they're not talking, that might be, that might take care of some of the feedback that we're getting. I could try to mute everybody here, but I apologize, last time I did that, I think I kicked Paige off. Sorry.
I'll try to speak loud. My question, Lori or Paige, and we may not know the answer to this yet, but you're saying that once the levy is established, are we going to be basing that off current funding? We see it because obviously you guys couldn't pursue the, the bump in the funding that we're looking for. If that were to come through in the future, how does that impact the levies and the cost to each municipal?
So if I understand your question correctly, are you asking, how is the levy determined for the fire territory? Is that essentially what you're asking?
So the additional funding that the township was looking for and trying to push through the legislation, that, that declined. So that's going to continue happening and come through hopefully in the future whenever that time comes. I see Lori shaking her head no.
No, I, I, I agree with Lori. That legislation is not going to happen. So I think really the message that, that the township received was you need to go through the statutory process of establishing a fire territory and in that way, you can get your additional funding.
So you don't see a way in the future, you don't see your funding ever catching up, Lori?
No, because our rate is so low. It is, it was designed for a very, very small population and it was designed for having a volunteer fire department. And the challenge is that it was never increased over the years. I don't, can't speak to that, but it, we're basically, our fire department is living in nineteen eighty-two.
Sure, but as, as you're going to continue seeking increases to your levy as, as the prior leadership didn't do, what does that do to the funding of the fire territory?
So the problem is we would never catch up if we pursued that. We're so far behind that we looked at it this year and Michael, we would have gotten, what, seventeen thousand dollars? I mean, it was a joke. It was just a joke.
Correct. I mean, we're, the township's currently sitting at a, this is Mike Royd, I apologize. The township's currently sitting around eight cents for operating. They really, to even come close to running something similar to Bud Creek, really need to be closer to twenty-eight cents. So there's, no matter how fast the township would grow, they could not grow out of where they are. This may have actually gotten established in the early seventies when maximum levies were first established and they were, the township was getting the same increase as any, any other unit of government through that period of time. And it simply was built on a, on a volunteer system, not a model of full-time service.
And I should just add to this, it is, I, I, many of you have heard me say this before and I think a lot of people think I'm really anti-volunteer fire. We owe an incredible debt to the people who have served us. It is unbelievable. They were doing twelve hundred runs a year with all volunteer. It's just, it was totally unfair that we asked them to do that. And when, when you see the drain and when you see what hasn't happened in terms of improving our equipment and what hasn't done in terms of moving and what hasn't done in terms of moving to, um, a more professional model, we're really doing them a disservice. So I think at this point, we really need to look at, at direction. And I know we had received support from all the partner, partnering municipalities um, to move forward with, um, with the special legislation approach. Um, essentially what we're asking for is for your support in, um, having Paige move forward with the financial analysis and determining, um, what, um, rate the fire territory should be set at. And we're also asking, um, and you may have thought as Paige was talking about this, what really happens is in becoming a fire territory, we are moving to a model where the towns are more engaged in how we grow and, and the operations of the fire department. You have a voice at the table in terms of the executive advisory, um, committee. I think that's a really smart move because it shouldn't be me coming to tell you, um, this is what needs to happen. It really need, the towns need to be engaged on a regular basis in terms of what do you need as you're planning your development? And are we making sure that the fire infrastructure matches where we're going as the towns build? Um, somehow that didn't happen, um, up to this point. And we need to make sure collectively that that does not happen again.
Well, I would say that, I, I would say that we need the analysis that Paige and her team are going to provide in order to know if we're going to be able to move forward or not. So I think it's kind, it's necessary, uh, for us to know what the next steps are even going to be.
So do you want to make a motion?
Is that what?
Right now, or do, or do we have more discussion?
There is a lot of information that's going to be needed, uh, prior to the couple given here, the May 13th meeting proposed by Paige. And I would, I would hope that we would have that information, a minimum of a week in advance to digest that, which is even going to compress that timeframe even further.
Yeah, we, we would like to get that to you maybe a week and a half to two weeks in advance. But yeah, we're, we're coming up on the timeline now. Um, we want you to see the numbers and be comfortable with them before we advertise for the public hearing. Um, so usually it takes four to six weeks to do this analysis, so we'd have to turn this around pretty quick.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to have Paige and Flori move forward with the, the recommendations and the analysis?
I make a motion to approve Baker Tilly, uh, to move forward with the analysis as requested.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did I get all five of you? Sorry.
There's Libby.
So is, is a five to over?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll probably have to start taking roll call when we do Zoom.
If you guys don't mind, I would like to get, um, our, just thoughts. I see Lisa McKinney's on.
Yeah, so it is. She runs the, the show, including, uh, all things technology. Um, no, I think the discussion is good. Fire territories, um, you know, as Paige has laid out and, uh, in detail and further discussions will be had are important, uh, in these situations. I mean, ever since the property tax caps and, um, you know, funding is tight. It's tight for the town as well. And so I agree with you, Robert, that looking at the numbers of what this would mean for the town, um, with respect to its budget and then also providing for fire protection, uh, in the town and then, you know, in the larger community, and that's what you're going to need to, to look at.
Thank you.
We're comfortable with the timeframes Alex has proposed?
Paige, Paige hit the nail on the head. I mean, we do have some extra time because of the situation to, um, to make this happen this year. Um, but we're going to almost certainly have to have some special meetings and, uh, hearings and, and get together either by Zoom or, or however we can more frequently than we typically do.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, uh, yeah, go down, just start going through the meeting now, the unfinished business.
Um, Fritz, do you need to approve, um, funding, um, for your portion of the analysis?
Do you need me to sign something?
Well, do you guys need, do you need to, um, I don't know.
Do I make a mo, do we need to make a motion to approve the, the funding? Which, which one?
I think it was included in Robert's motion. I mean, have, to have Paige and Baker Tilly move forward with their analysis. I mean, I, I, you can have another motion, but I think that's covered already.
Okay.
But we don't, we don't really know what, what breakdown we're going to do though.
Yeah.
Which choice? There's three different versions here, how we want to break. I mean, obviously I think it's just splitting it three ways is fair to me, but we probably need to determine that, don't we?
I would be in favor of them that assessed that myself.
I would just mention this particular item and I leave this up to you. But, um, I would note that, um, right now, um, Fortville is proportionally receiving much higher services than McCordsville is. Um, I would recommend that we agree to split it equally.
Well, that's why I, I say equally also.
I do too.
I can go that way.
If we're all going to share the territory, then we should share the costs, right?
Well, to Flori's point right now, I think it's, I, I see, I see her point.
Yeah.
I think those will be taken into consideration. So do we need a separate motion? I, I'll make, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we split the costs equally, at least Fortville's portion of this.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
The motions carrier. Yeah. It's, um, this is so difficult doing a meeting this way. Um, so I move on to unfinished business? Or we have something else to discuss?
I will just say that McCordsville's, uh, town council is meeting tomorrow night and, um, the Vernon Township Board has already approved moving forward. So we will, uh, be back in touch quickly, um, once we have the McCordsville Town Council, um, uh, vote and thank you all.
Thank you. I don't, we don't have any unfinished business. Uh, Joe, do you have anything you want to talk to us about?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I guess I have to, I have to comment on the fact that we've had a, the generous donation that came across for the, uh, utility bills for the town of Fortville. I think, uh, it, it's worth commenting on and, uh, saying thank you. I know the business is, uh, is obviously who's claiming that donation, but, uh, it's very helpful. Uh, we've gotten a lot of comments from people that are very grateful. Uh, and it's also kind of spurred a little, uh, others wanting to do the same thing and trying to find a way to help out the community. And I did see the email from Flori and, uh, we're going to try to send some folks her way as well. But that's all I've got. We didn't have anything else for the agenda.
Thank you. Uh, Adam, is Adam there in on the meeting?
He is.
Do you, Adam, do you have anything to add?
You're muted, Adam.
Uh, Missy, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Uh, nothing to add for me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, Bill, Chief Bill, you in there?
I am.
Uh, do you have any comment or anything? How are the, the police department holding up?
Everybody's clear right now. We don't have anybody quarantined. We did have two officers quarantined at, at, uh, different times, but they came back, uh, negative. So everybody's healthy. Uh, we're all wearing our PPE on all of our calls that we respond to in person. The only other thing I wanted to acknowledge was, uh, I put a, a post on Facebook today. I don't know if everybody had an opportunity to see it, but we did receive a, a generous donation of $15,000, uh, on behalf of the estate of Patricia Pope, who, uh, passed away last May of, of 2019. And I received a call from her executor who wishes to remain anonymous for obvious reasons. Uh, and she, her initial thought was to purchase us a K-9. And I explained to her that we already had that and we've had that in place for a little under a year. Uh, but she graciously, uh, volunteered to write us a check for $10,000. And, uh, when I opened the, uh, card, there was a $15,000 check in there. So that would save taxpayers, uh, a lot of money over the next couple of years in, uh, it, in the way it won't, won't cost any of the taxpayers any budget money to maintain our K-9 program.
Thank you. Uh, Alex, you have anything to add?
Nope, I'm all set unless you have questions for me.
We won't have a public comment. Town council, uh, Tanya, do you have any comments?
No, I think this is a great idea on the fire thing. It should have been done a long time ago. We did need help. We need to give it.
Thank you. Uh, Robert?
I'm good.
Uh, Libby?
I'm good. I agree with Tanya. We just need to get this done.
Becky?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. I don't have any, um, anything to add also. But somebody, how do we get to do the vouchers? We're just going to sign them off of our email and then, uh, fax our, email them back on the signed vouchers?
We gave Missy the approval to do the necessary ones until our next meeting. Um, that we would sign them for, unless you have something you need to add about Joe.
No, I don't. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn the me, uh, adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn at 8:05.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Flori.
Have a good evening.
You too.